Each one that call upon you, we pray your wisdom and direction would be granted. We pray you would watch over us as we make decisions for the county today. We ask for wisdom and direction. Be with those that protect us, keep them safe, and watch over them. We ask it all in the name of Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First item of business for our March 16th meeting here is the minutes were sent via email. Any alterations or corrections? If not, I'm going to change the motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Payroll number five, calendar year 2020 is $238,114.65. We had a total of 174 claims of $336,295.2. I'll change the motion for the financials.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a whole lot to report other than numbers. We have 82 inmates in jail as of this morning. Thirty-five of those are pretrial Superior, 14 pretrial Circuit, 14 F6, and eight DOC. The only other just update as far as the building and such with the Corona stuff going around, unfortunately, I can't shut down, but we have restricted all any contact with inmates as far as visitation, those type of things. We do have video visitation, but we also have attorneys, probation, all kinds of people. So I've limited that to through glass, the old visitation way. They can still do the video visitation and such, but so we've had to implement some kind of makeshift protocols as far as our booking process, how we're screening inmates coming in, working with the local agencies as well to try and limit who they bring to the jail as far as if it's a low-level crime, they're going, I'm asking for them to file for a warrant instead of bringing them to jail to delay the process so we can see, since this changes every day, to kind of see where we're at with that. Or if we're summoning them into court, there are certain arrests where we summon them to court, which eventually they'll come to the jail for a book-in. We're asking they put that out in a couple of weeks, kind of see where we're at with those type of things. Other than cleaning, monitoring, like I said, we added questions to our pre-book-in questionnaire as far as medical stuff. We're taking all people coming in, and if we do have anybody that they suspect has the flu or a sickness before getting to our jail to have them taken, you know, and get them medically cleared, so if they're showing signs and symptoms, so. Other than that, just trying to stay up with the day-to-day as far as what's going on there. I'm sure that's kind of reflected, a little bit lower numbers in the jails, so do the best we can with what we got and hopefully keep everybody healthy and safe.
I think it'll be a pretty flowed week.
Yeah.
And we have to go with what.
Yeah, for sure.
What we have there, so.
Other than that, I don't have anything else unless you guys have got any questions.
Oh, you have a moment, I can speak outside.
Yep.
All right. Josh. Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, this week, we started running our ditcher attachment, basically going to hit some winter notes that we found here before the spring rain, try to get some water moving. We'll get back to that probably in April or May, but at least this week, we're going to hit it hard and try to get some things taken care of. We've been able to grade the gravel roads three times in the last couple of weeks with the weather and just working in our favor. With that said, last week, we started spotting in stone in some real bad spots, bigger stone twenties and fours and such, and then this week, we will start hauling township stone to cover up those spots and everything else that needs stone. It's that time of year. We spent the last three weeks, went through a whole load of cold mix, hitting potholes north and south. Should be done with that this week, so I'm hoping if the weather warms up in the next couple of weeks, we'll start running our dura-patcher over those spots amongst several others. Last week, we got one of our small structures installed down in Nottingham Township. We did receive the first quote last week for the rest of those structures, and then at that point, Nate and I just sat down and kind of see how much money we have and what we can squeeze in, what can wait, what needs done this year. And then number six is kind of a carryover from the dump truck that had the accident. Hopefully, we'll get that back in another couple of weeks. They're in process, all the parts are there and in the process of getting fixed.
Very good.
That's it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Nate. Good morning.
All right. Couple items on my list here. The National Bridge Inspection Report, our 2021 to 24 project. You actually have in front of you the applications. We received four applications from consultants that we'll need review and score. We can do that afterwards, certainly in a couple of letters of kind of regret that they're either booked, too booked to apply, or just don't feel that they could perform good service on it based on their other pre-existing projects. So we can do that after the meeting, that's no problem. I'll compile that, send the scoring off in dot. Once they've accepted it, I'll start the process of negotiating a proposal with the most qualified firm.
Do we have to do that today?
Uh, if at all possible. If not, then you can take those and just return those back to me. I just need to get those back hopefully in the next week or so. I need to keep, I need to get our contracts ready and signed no later than probably with the state by May.
Okay.
So that kind of gives us an idea of our timeframe.
Okay.
So Wells County Bridge 51, the RFQ for that one has been sent out, it's been posted. All the statement of qualifications similar to this, you'll receive on April 9th. I'll get those together and distributed, and then at the April 20th meeting, we can try to score that project as well. So similar process, just different standards we're going to be looking at for those projects. Regional Sewer District Meeting, there's another meeting for that tomorrow night. That's not been canceled to this point. It'll be at 6:30 here. Hopefully, we'll be going forward with our treatment agreement. North Quarter Study, actually, on the bottom of your stack is a copy of the front-end document for that, so you will have a copy. It was presented to council at their March 3rd meeting, I guess it was. I'm going to get my dates wrong here. So they received that report. It's essentially public information. Roger will be posting that on the county website here shortly. We had to update it now. And then item five, road conversion schedule. We've been delaying, kind of announcing what we have 100% right-of-ways back on because we're waiting to get more responses, hoping that just one or two holdouts would turn into paperwork. We have not, and Josh and I talking about it, I want to go ahead and bring forward the three sections that we have 100% right-of-way responded, responses back, and that would be a bleak road from Veracruz to the East County line, County Road 800 East, that's from Three South down into the floodplain river, and then County Road 450 South for State Road 1 West to 200 East.
So what's that distance total?
Uh, you're sitting about.
It's about two and a half miles total with that?
Okay.
So not as much as we're hoping for, certainly.
There's other sections, certainly, we'd love to see other sections turn in, but we had some property owners when they got the documents say no, or some just say, oh, we forgot we got it, and then two weeks still go by. So certainly, it's a great program, but we're certainly not trying to twist anybody's arm to make these happen. We certainly try to be open-handed with what the process is and how we want to try to prioritize these. So at this point, we're just coming to the commissioners, asking if you're willing to have us move forward on scheduling these along with the others that we have 100% right-of-way on, and we'll try to work these into the next two years in our schedule. And then as it stands right now, the process will stay open in June, we'll close it for a month, re-tabulate everything, and then we'll see where we want to move forward.
Very good.
Right? And the last item that I have on here is any road conversion right-of-way packets. I received none, so I'm not sure, Roy, had you seen any other right-of-ways come in?
I have three. Conversion or just sell-offs? One's conversion. Two conversions. They're all conversion.
They came in here this last week.
400 West, 400 North, 400 West.
Okay. And we'll look at, I think the 400 West section, there's still another holdout, but we'll look at that one. I think that area had some.
Is that the one I got a phone call on and we had a discussion?
Possibly.
I don't know, is 400 West the one that's?
It's got the Army Corps doing the next one, so.
Army Corps, which we hadn't started on.
Correct. So we still have the Army Corps to work with and a lot of floodplain. That project will be a difficult one when we finally decide to move forward on that fully with construction, I'll most likely bring someone in to assist with permitting, so I'll have to ask for somebody.
It took about a year to go through.
Yeah. That'll be a slow one, but we kind of, we know that going into that one, so.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Oh, all right. Did you got the private sidewalk permit in this form?
Uh, I didn't put it on my agenda at this point, just because we need to discuss essentially not just that form, but if we want to try to add another ordinance that would cover a reimbursement. And most likely, we'll try to do something with, in the budget session as far as maybe modifying how we appropriate the ADA budget moving forward. I would like to, in 2021, institute some sort of a sidewalk reimbursement program, since we just recently put a moratorium on removal of sidewalk in the public right-of-way, give some people some options, because sometimes it is just condition-related and we have never pursued doing sidewalk work. If there's a match, most likely, that may kind of soften the blow of telling people no, so. But we've got a form, there's a process that I'd like to try to institute, but I want to try to, I'll send you some of that paperwork for consideration, and then over the next month or two, we can see how we want to move forward.
About the offers for Bridge 99, your highway in Anchorage?
Um, I have not met with them yet. Tim and I need to schedule some time to talk with them individually. I know the offers have been drafted and haven't been distributed. I believe council was going to see those, but I haven't.
Well, I thought we would have them approve of after we had it accepted.
Okay.
But it would be up to the commissioners to approve.
I can.
You had prepared a spreadsheet as to values.
Yep.
And I don't know that I heard from any of the commissioners on.
On if it was acceptable. I have not either.
Yeah, you responded back to one of them, which I was fine with. I didn't have any issue whatsoever with what you placed that one.
If you're okay with that number, then I've got three for you to sign, so he has actually assigned offer to take to them.
Do you remember seeing his proposal back?
I don't remember seeing a number. I just wasn't looking at it for that reason. I thought we were, I thought we were going to put the numbers in as we went.
Okay. To make an offer, you got to have, unless you want him to, he'll negotiate the number and then come back?
We're talking the number of money or the number of acres?
Number of money.
Number of money.
We know that.
The acreage has already been defined.
Some of the acres are so small.
That's what I thought we were competing with them for.
Some of, the amount of the acres of new right-of-way is so small that, so I just took his high-side number and then sent that out for you to see.
That's what I was going to talk to Nate about afterwards, so.
Okay.
That's fine.
Do that.
Then we'll follow that process. I'll coordinate with you, Tim, and move forward. All right? No other problems? Thank you.
Anything else, Roy?
Not on, I think, not on.
Okay. Thanks, Nate. Okay. Mike, junior, you're up.
Yeah. Two things today, so I don't know which ones personally, does the rezoning or where else plaza?
We have the plaza request first.
Okay, okay. So Bluffton now, as part of the usage of the Parlor City Plaza, I would like to request the availability of using the county's portion of the plaza for the Parlor City Market, which is the revamped version of the farmer's market here in Bluffton, and the dates would run from May 2nd to September 19th, every Saturday except for the Fourth of July weekend. So we'd be asking for that, and we would be getting insurance to cover, to cover the county as well as part of that packet of the million-dollar liability range as the county's policy is.
I'm on that group and committee, and I would support that. I know we had a couple of things that we had discussed, and I think the liability and the use of restrooms and due to the fact that we had issues with plungers and door access and staffing on a Saturday, the library, since they're open or right now.
Will be the upper restroom.
Offered, offered to have that utilized as a use since it's only quarter of a block away, so I would support that. If you have any questions.
I was second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. And zoning.
Okay. All right. So the Wells County Plane Commission Office, our board, made a due-pass recommendation for the rezoning of the property that RTT owns, a portion of it, which would be the west, basically the west half of the property. There were ITI and some other businesses that are in the front of the property there. So the rezoning request is to change that from Business 3 to Residential 3 to allow for multifamily apartments to be developed. It's currently not annexed within the city of Bluffton, though the goal is by the time the project's completely developed that it would be annexed, so that's part of our ongoing discussions.
What's the timeframe on when you say the project, that when it gets completed would be? What is the timeframe?
Estimated completion time?
Uh, completion time would have to be after the city's sewer project is completed, which will be later this year, if not early next year.
Okay. So at what juncture, the street that leads, I'm not sure, I don't have my streets on top of me, but the one that's supposed to interact with the driveway of Outdoor Concepts to the west?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that street going to be put into the county specs?
No, city specs. Because the goal for utilities and the roadway are there would be city utilities and city street that run along the mains, so.
Do we need to have a timeline that we coincide with the city to make sure things happen on a?
We've already, our office has already started to let the city know that they need to work towards annexation, and the property owner is very interested in annexation because they also want to do some financing options possibly, so.
Okay.
Those are things that we're working on right now.
So the utilities would be between the city and the property owner?
Yeah, some of the city's utilities, yeah, anyways, no matter.
You had a question, Josh?
This street you're talking about will then go into North Oaks.
Correct.
Has there ever been talk about annexing North Oaks?
Yeah, the issue with annexing North Oaks is it only would really happen if all people in North Oaks wanted to be annexed, because it would be done voluntarily.
Did they already sign waivers when they?
It's not consistent, and with how the states kind of knocked down the powers of those over time here too, with annexation rules, that there'd be some question on when we're done.
So I mean, everybody in North Oaks is connected to sewer.
Everybody's connected to sewer, but some of them are connected to water.
Right, some of them. But with the, with the permission that you signed a paper to connect the sewer, isn't there a paragraph? I mean, and I'm out on 201.
The city has not necessarily been consistent over time, so we don't know whether they have all done that, or only the ones that are hooked to water are. The sewer issue was taken care of a long time ago, and I don't know if that was necessarily done at that time.
So I guess the question that's raised, like most places, when you hook up to city utilities, you sign a waiver of.
Yeah, correct.
Non-remunstrance.
Yeah, we don't.
Not remunstrance.
I'm not aware if the, if the city has looked in to see how many of those people have done that. We're only looking at the specific property. Yes, it would make sense that any urbanized development would be in the city limits, but that's, yes, instead of having things carved out that look like they should.
Right, that's the whole, the whole key is to work in unison to make something.
But the, yeah, the focus would be to have this property get voluntarily annexed into the city to start that process.
So with the entire parcel?
Correct.
Not just the portion that we're talking about, but the entire?
The entire parcel, yeah. Yeah, the zoning would be only on the west half, the entire parcel would be annexed.
Gotcha.
Because there's, there's also a phase of this project that deals with used store and some possible commercial development as well.
Right.
So we have plans at our office that will go in front of the Plane Commission Board for the basis of involvement for our next meeting.
So is that something that will just never happen, North Oaks being annexed?
I don't know, never.
Being that this new leg is going to be right there in the city, and it's surrounded by the city.
The, the opportunity is definitely. The opportunity is, the opportunity is now there, for sure, because there has to be connectivity to the city, and there would be connectivity once this is annexed, for sure.
There's something to think about.
Absolutely does, and it has been discussed. So if you have or wish to adopt, I would just need your next ordinance number and vote to adopt the ordinance to rezone that property.
2025. 2025.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to, for ordinance 2020-05, amending Wells County zoning ordinance and zone maps.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Should be on the, should be on the second.
Yep.
Yep. Anything else while I'm here?
Thank you.
Nope.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Well, Liz here.
Oh, you're here in place?
Okay.
Are you ready for her?
Yep.
Yep.
That's it, just one? Okay. There she is. Thank you.
We're going to move you up. Moving on up. Good morning.
Here on behalf of the Maumee River Basin Commission in my office, to declare this week, flood safety awareness week. As you are aware, the river just wet below flood stage with not a very big rain, and they're predicting more rain this week, that we'll probably have some a little bit of flooding. One of the number one causes of death in a flood is people driving through flooded roadway and then going off-road, and that's one of the big things, the big, the taglines that you always hear about flood safety is turn around, don't drown. Would appreciate you signing the declaration that this is flood safety awareness week in Wells County.
Motion to dispute the flood safety awareness week in Wells County?
I would second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
That's a classic big name.
Okay. I always stop doing my hair. Yes, please.
All right.
I can't screw it up. Don't screw it up.
Just mind your own business. Mind your own business. Bot ordinance into place here. Okay.
Just a brief description, I guess, BOT means build, operate, transfer. There's a provision that we have to find ordinance, and I'll let Roy explain it just a little bit better in detail.
There is, there is an Indiana code, a statute to authorize political subdivisions, county, cities, whatever, to enter into public-private agreements with an operator, and those terms are defined in the statute. Basically, what this does is if the political subdivision, in this case, if the county adopts this ordinance, then it can use a public-private agreement with respect to construction of public works, i.e., new county highway garage. The adoption of the ordinance doesn't commit the county to do anything, it just says, if you decide to have a project, you may use a public-private agreement as a means of construction of that building. So this does not commit the county to do anything, it just says, in looking at a situation like that and constructing, again, a new county highway garage, the county can consider using this as a tool. So I prepared that in ordinance and circulated it to the commissioners and discussed this several times, and it's ready for adoption, or at least consideration for adoption by the commissioners.
Motion to adopt it.
Second, and that ordinance is 2020-06.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
3-0. Is there more than one copy?
I've got a couple coming your way. I might have two copies.
There's two more.
I really appreciate that. I need to be one of them.
Oh.
Because I remember years ago, when we would give them like eight months, and I'm rare, and I get six every month.
Oh.
I mean, with White House all over that.
I'm sure you did. I'm sure you did. Yeah, yeah, I do, yes.
So thank you.
Okay, I will.
All right. All right. I believe that was all, so we'll move Marlene in.
Well, good morning, everyone. We certainly have some interesting things happening within our county and state and world at this point in time. So everybody's most important information is what we received this weekend with a positive.
Could you use the mic?
Oh, correct.
We can't hear you.
A positive test result on an individual. It is our information that the person was diagnosed and has been contained within Allen County, just happens to have a Wells County address, and so that's why she's, it's getting accredited here to Wells County as a positive case, so. But since January 9th, she has been contained within Allen County. She has not had any contact with anyone here from Wells County, so the exposure has been slim to none at best. So the protocol, how this all happens, is once the test is done, either at a private or at a state Department of Health lab, those results comes to us. We received information on late Friday evening, and Lynn and I were both in the office on Saturday and trying to get as much information and gathered as well as out to everyone as far as what we need to do next. As you know, some of the churches shut down this weekend, some of the restaurants are not having, serving within their facilities, are only doing drive-up. We've not got that information from the government at this point. The good news is. State Department of Health lab, those results come to us. We received information on late Friday evening. And Lynn and I were both in the office on Saturday and trying to get as much information and gathered as well as out to everyone as far as what we need to do next. As you know, some of the churches shut down this weekend. Some of the restaurants are not having serving within their facilities or only doing drive-up. We've not got that information from the government at this point. The good news is, is our cases are moving along slowly. There's nineteen positive in the state of Indiana at this point. Hopefully, by us containing ourselves and staying inside and keeping our six-foot distance from everyone, that we will keep it at a minimum, so. Any questions, thoughts?
Couple of questions. One, are we following what's being brought down from the governor's office from the state level to?
As far as the quarantining?
Yes.
So the schools obviously have shut down. So his advice on Thursday afternoon, I believe, was two hundred and fifty. We've heard that that's went down fifty to fifty people, I even heard, and again, this was just total speculation at this point, that it's going to go less, but what they're saying, any any large gatherings should keep at least six feet away from the other person, and if you're sick, stay at home.
Okay, and could you reiterate again the findings of this individual that has come down with this, the fact it was as of January ninth? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, yeah, so.
Just repeat that again, so I hear that.
She, the individual has not been, was not diagnosed on January the ninth. She has been in Allen County since January ninth.
Okay. And really little of known, no known contact.
She has been institutionalized in a facility since that point in time, so.
Okay.
Regarding the press conference that Pence and Trump and all his people had yesterday, how this public-private testing, have you received any of what's the intention and the timetable?
We do not have the test here, and to my knowledge, neither does the hospital. They can do a nasal swab and do a presumptive test result from there. They are talking about doing some mass testing. Obviously, they've got to have test kits to do that. It is, again, coming from the federal government, it's saying that they will use parking lots of C V S and et cetera, but my guess is that will come down to the states to to activate their pandemic plans, and one of ours is we've done drive-through exercises before. And we could set up something like that when we prepare to do so.
Right.
So right now, if somebody thinks they may have it and they call you, what are you advising them to?
They need to call their physician. We've had a lot of people say that they don't have a physician, so then we're telling them they need to call the emergency rooms and/or we give them this, ask if they're having any symptoms, and they need to explain their own symptoms.
So regarding the Department of Homeland Security's website with the list of all the questions that you have to answer first before you can even get the test that they propose.
Right.
I mean, is can you read off or just have a cheat sheet and say, do you have these symptoms over the phone? If you qualify, you need to go do this.
I think Ready Med and we had a conference call last night from the Lutheran group, and they were talking about doing the screening calls, and then they're not saying they're going to send them for COVID testing. They're sending them for an evaluation. And so then they go see a physician somewhere, and they've got some sites set up, but I think they kept talking about this site in Roanoke, and so and then they're taking our testing supplies away from us in our office and our masks and stuff, so we're not even going to be able to do it here. So I'm not sure Wells County has any site that can even test.
Not to my knowledge.
But that could change.
Exactly.
I mean, everything is so fluid.
Yes, that's correct.
They change their mind about every day, not Lutheran, but everybody.
Yes.
Everybody's coming up with, yeah. I mean, I'm just reading what Jerome, the
Adams?
Adams, our Surgeon General.
Yes.
Is this, if we spread fear, distrust, and misinformation, the situation will last longer, more people will be hurt. But if we pitch in and share the facts, we will flatten the curve and overcome the situation, so.
And the facts are right now is you can be asymptomatic, you may have it. I may have it. We're walking around. I don't have any symptoms, and none of you look like you have any symptoms, but obviously, we could have symptoms, and so that's why they're saying social distancing, stay at home, don't gather in large groups, and keep your six-foot distance. Wash your hands, keep your cans away from your face, you know.
And the incubation period, as I read just recently, still is a minimum of two days, up to possibly fourteen days, but they're saying two to seven is kind of what they've settled on at this point.
Yes.
Which means you could catch it and have it for seven days before you show symptoms.
For sure, yes, asymptomatic.
Absolutely.
And then the symptoms are longer to progress. I mean, from what I've understood, it could be a scratchy throat or a sore throat for a few days, and then it gravitates into and it could be, and it could be a three-foot distance instead of six.
It could be.
God love you. Anyway, but I've read where it starts here, and it gravitates here, before you really even feel a fever.
Like the common cold. Like the common cold, you know.
So just use some common sense.
So obviously, if we touch our face and we we cough into our hands, let's protect our coughs. Let's wash our hands more often. We're going through cans of Lysol right now. We have them, and so with each person that comes to my window and with each patient that comes in for immunizations, we're trying to clean as much as possible, bump up the disinfectant.
My Lysol wipes.
And when you run out of your Lysol, you can mix up some bleach solution and use it. Those things are not getting restocked on the shelves very quickly. We may end up having to use that.
And the the worst thing is the fear that everybody has, and we've heard everything from just people. Mental health has actually been had, you know, this morning I had a call about they're planning a wedding wedding shower. Should I do the wedding shower? You know, what about this? Somebody just came back from getting married in the Caribbean, and are they, have they been tested? Well, we have no way of knowing those things, no way at all, so again, watch your symptoms, stay at home, wash your hands, be cognitive of yourself and and your family.
And then what? Is influenza A floating around too?
Oh, influenza is still here, yes.
Influenza A and B is very prevalent.
Right.
I had positive tests on Friday that I didn't.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I'm just thinking, this is between you two ladies, I'm probably good to go.
More seriously is the P P E, the personal protection equipment, you know, the hospitals, emergency rooms, EMS, everybody is getting kind of flattened on their supply, and it's not coming out, so.
Yeah, that's a big concern.
Yes, it is, yes.
Thanks, Marlene.
We will keep you abreast.
Yes, please, thanks. Appreciate all the updates. We've went through the last three hundred emails, probably.
It allows me to share some real information, like Blake says, what's right and.
Sure, and a lot of people knew a lot more than we did.
Of course they did, right?
Yes, but, yeah, but.
You can dispel that information.
The facts, you have them there, so, okay?
Very good. Keep us abreast.
Oh, we'll do it. Thank you, say well.
We're trying to keep everything clean, like he's keeping jail clean and.
Pressure wash with bleach wire.
Wipes on banisters at the courthouse and the elevator buttons.
And I'm sure Bobby's doing what she can to try to, I mean, everything probably ought to be wiped down at the end of the day, because in the court system and stuff, too, so.
All right.
What do you have as our monthly reports?
I do have an E M A grant application. This is from E M A, and it goes along with equipment that you need at the jail, the grant request. So you guys give approval to for grant applications. It's not anything that's been accepted or approved, or we haven't gotten notification from the state.
It's one of those, we spend the money first.
Right.
Correct, and get the thing, and then once we get it, we have to resubmit every, and then they reimburse us.
County spends the funds, ends reimbursed.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion and allow president to sign.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Roy had a use of requests for proposals.
Yeah. Kevin had asked me to look at some documents regarding use of requests for proposals for a guaranteed savings contract. The statute on use of requests for proposals is subject to the purchasing agency's policies. And the county code, the only, in our county code at the present time, the only thing I see for use of requests for proposals is for purchases of designated types of supplies. And then it says, insert list of supplies of our ordinance. We don't even know what supplies they have, so my my thought is for the commissioners to adopt a new ordinance, amending that ordinance to allow the use of requests for proposals in various projects, including but not limited to a guaranteed savings contract. I mean, again, as I read it, our existing policies or ordinances talk about supplies, and I don't think that the proposal that is under consideration has anything to do with buying paper big pens, but rather an improvement to a public building or jail or whatever, so I think it's much more serious than that, and it needs to be, in my opinion, authorized by county ordinance. I don't have that. I just was following that up on the weekend, so I would
I would recommend.
Prepare and draft for your consideration for the next meeting. We also have a under consideration the county to adopt a cumulative capital development fund. And so I don't have an ordinance for your adoption today. I've drafted an ordinance and have circulated it, but the procedure would require for the commissioners, basically, the commissioners adopt an ordinance that creates the fund, and then it's up to county council to fund it. You can create a, the commissioners create the fund, and if council chooses to fund it, fine, but you got to have a fund first before council can fund it. So the procedure is for the commissioners to publish notice of their intention to create a fund. And from what we have received from the Department of Local Government Finance, I got that words in the right order, there's a max rate, and so I've drafted opposed ordinance that would adopt, it would say the county will create the fund not to exceed this rate. And from what we've received from the state, for the first year of the implementation, your rate is, can't exceed half of that max, so the ordinance and the notice that I prepared would give the county taxpayers notice that the commissioners intend to create a fund, and its maximum rate can't exceed, that's what the statute provides, so that needs to be published twice, and then it can come up for adoption the next meeting, and then once you've adopted the ordinance, then we have to give notice that you've adopted the ordinance, and all this has to be done by April thirty to be in line for its use for this twenty twenty tax year. It's twenty twenty payable in twenty one. So I don't have an ordinance for you to adopt, but for you to discuss and give me direction to go ahead and publish a notice. I guess I do have a notice for you to sign if you choose to proceed.
Do you actually need a motion to proceed?
Yes, and and to give notice.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three zero. There is a.
Thank you so much.
Is it spread rationer?
Distillery giving this things.
Oh, my gosh, is it sixty-eight percent or what is it?
Sixty-two percent.
Just over the barrier. I think I saw Nancy Pelosi.
Thanks, Marlene.
Are you going to advertise?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Don't touch your face. What else do you have for us, Lisa?
The job performance review is listed. Is that anything you wanted to visit?
Is this regarding C C? Many corrections. We did have our meeting this past week, and we presented at that meeting what we had submitted to Roy that you guys each received, so we're going to wait till response.
Very chance, good chance.
The board, which is now Kent, Kevin, and Jim will review that performance, job performance document. Probably coordinate.
Perfect.
Put some of the items in it.
That's the immediate tree in the forest, but that would be, I mean, it would seem to be an appropriate form for all the county departments to use.
Right, if it needs to be tweaked accordingly, that's fine, so.
It's working progress.
Yeah, it's working progress, so.
I think the sheriff is nodding his head because crime is a direct connection to the drug epidemic. And why that hasn't been attacked like the coronavirus, I I don't know. I'm just speaking from personal thinking or personal thoughts, and, I mean, there's so much crime that is connected to drugs. Unbelievable, but yet it just goes on and on and on. I think I'm frustrated over that as much as anything. I'm just thinking out loud, you don't need to respond, I'm just frustrated. The fact is, I mean, this incident a week or so ago that happened in Fort Wayne and from a Wells County prisoner. I have no proof, but I wouldn't be surprised if that wasn't drug epidemic-related known situation, but no deep facts that I do know. Be that as it may.
Andy, I seen you walk in. Did you need to address us commissioners?
I just came over to see if you were taking any action or not, and I'm not advocating any necessary restrictive, restrictive practice at the courthouse.
Actually, I think you would be a good person to include in the session we're going to have here in just a sec.
Because you were walking in, if you would, yeah, I agree.
True.
That being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
We'll start in a couple of minutes if that's all.